March 23, 2023, Planning Board Public Session. Calling it to order, we have a roll call, please.
Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finity.
Present.
Secretary is here. Board Member Catalinato is absent. Board Member Mutu.
Present.
Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Fulham is absent. We have a call.
Please join in for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So procedures and rules for tonight. We have presentation of two applications. We do have people on Zoom, so who's not in the audience will take for Zoom. And safety, just out those front doors, down the front door and out of the building in case of emergency. So the first one will be 200 West Montauk Highway. Do we have?
We do, Madam Chair.
We have notice, okay? Tom, you want to read it into the record?
Sure. Please take notice that in accordance with Local Law Number 417 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, March 23, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via teleconferencing to consider the pre-submission conference entitled 200 West Montauk Highway. The proposed site plan is for the conversion of an existing 1,650 square foot, two-story antique and furniture repair shop to a retail store (home furnishings) and nail salon on the first floor and to include second-floor office space as well as unfinished basement, situated on a 1.528 acre parcel located in the HB and R40 zoning districts and situated within the Aquifer Protection Overlay District and the Central Pine Barrens compatible growth area in the Hamlet of Hampton Bays, located north of Montauk Highway at 200 West Montauk Highway, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-221-3-14.1.
Okay, thanks. Someone representing the application?
For the applicant, Stephen D. Lemancki, P.E., the site is a very unusual site. It's about 100 times as long as it is wide. It's the building that's next to the McDonald's on the highway. Not a particularly handsome building at that. We're going to try to spruce that up as well. We're going for basically a change of use and then conforming to all of the rules with the parking and drainage and et cetera. Basically, that's it in a nutshell.
Charles, is there anybody on Zoom?
I see no hands.
Anyone in the public?
I do have a hand now.
You have a hand. Yeah. It's for this application, Charles? Hello? Okay, you're on Zoom. Can we have your name, please?
My name is Garrett Persia, but I'm not here.
You're on mute.
You're on mute, so unmute yourself, please.
No, I'm not on mute.
Now you are.
Now we can.
Just give us your name, please, and affiliation for the record.
My name is Garrett Persia. I'm a broker with Courtroom Group, but I'm not here to comment on what you talked me about. I'm here commenting on another vision, another item.
Okay, so you're not for the first agenda item.
No, I'm not.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone here has come in?
I see all the hands.
Okay, who wishes to speak on 200 West Montauk Highway, pre-submission conference?
Motion to close.
Okay, motion to close with a 30-day written comment period. Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria. All in favor?
Thank you.
Extentions five in favor, two absent.
Thank you.
Our second hearing is 625 Butter Lane, World Peas. Do we have notice, counsel?
We do, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have notice. Read it into the record, Gloria.
Please take notice that in accordance with Local Law Number 417 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, March 23, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the covenant amendment entitled "World Peas Ag Reserve 625 Butter Lane." The application is a request to amend the location of the envelope for agricultural structures associated with a farm on a 9.05 acre agricultural reserve parcel created with the subdivision map of World Peas located in the CR 880 zoning district east of Butter Lane, Hamlet of Bridgehampton, Suffolk Tax Map Number 900-51-1-17.7.
Let's go look something up. Sorry. You looking up there. Ignore me.
Okay.
Sorry.
I can do that.
Mr. Bennett?
Hi.
It's all yours.
Okay, thanks. So my name is John Bennett. I'm a lawyer with Bennett and Reed in Southampton. I'll pick up my talking sheets. And I remember when Al Tough chose the name for this, he thought it was very funny, World Peas. I think he was listening to a Grateful Dead album at the time. I hope Al's listening. Anyway, we submitted the affidavits of mailing and posting. So the request here is to shift the agricultural reserve, I'm sorry, shift the area for agricultural structures.
Excuse me, could you speak up just a little bit? I can't, or maybe the mic.
Yeah.
There's a little bit of feedback.
I'm having a hard time hearing as well.
He said push it up a little.
Maybe just pull it up a little bit.
That's for the recording.
I'm getting a little bit of feedback. Maybe it was a Hendrix album he was listening to. In any event, so John Bennett here. The request is to shift the area of that allows on the subdivision map agricultural structures somewhat to the east. How did this come up? Well, first of all, some of the proposed structures we have here, which is not before the board tonight, which before the board tonight is solely the request to change the area for allowed agricultural structures. Some of the structures conform, but some of the proposed conform to the, within the footprint for the limit of agricultural structures. But some of the structures, which are for housing animals, animal housing, I guess, wouldn't conform. So we're before the zoning board of appeals for relief for those structures. And the zoning board of appeals, based upon some comments from some of the neighbors, said, why don't you go to the planning board and see if they'll move the, that area where the agricultural structures can go? The idea.
Idea being twofold.
One is that it would be less impactful to some of the neighbors, although I think they've changed their mind on that. And then also, you guys aren't the zoning board, you're the planning board, but one of the, one of the standards in trying to obtain a variance is that you've tried through some other means to obviate the need for the variance. So we're here to see if the board will allow us to move the area for agricultural structures, then the variance wouldn't be necessary. If the board says no, we're just back to the zoning board of appeals. But we've, we've checked off one of the boxes on what we have to do to prove the variance.
John, you weren't before the variance on the nine and a half acres as opposed to the 10?
Nine and a half acres as opposed to 10, although we also have a request for determination that what we're doing there is not animal husbandry per se. But, but none of that's, we're not talking about it today.
Well, no, I know, but you're going, you're saying, if they give you the relief, then you don't have to go back. I'm just trying to clarify.
Well, they might have to go back for a very small variance, but you.
I just want to understand.
No, 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 that's fair. Christine, that's fair to point that out. So where did this all come from in terms of not only the zoning board of appeals, but also some of the comments from the neighbors? I'm not going to belabor these other than to describe these letters to you. Keep on losing. Oh, okay. A couple of, a couple of the neighbors who were represented by counsel, both Timmy Latham Shea and, and at the time, Tim Cully's office suggested that the area be moved to the east. I'll just, I'll just hand up copies of these for the records. There's one's a letter from April 12, 2019, from Burke and Sullivan, and the other one's a letter from February 7, 2019.
Are they, they're individual copies for your board members?
They're individual copies for board members. But in any event, I believe, as a matter of fact, Timmy Latham's letter included a, a proposed area, which shifted it, and it may have been the McCully letter, excuse me, which shifted the area for structures all the way to the east. We didn't think that was right. We're trying to, to the extent people feel agricultural structures on an ag reserve parcel are pain, we're just trying to shift the pain, so to speak. I don't agree that that's the proper way to characterize that stuff. But the idea was to shift this, this area to the east. And that was based on some of the comments from the neighbors who wanted this area shifted. I don't know, they may have changed their mind on that. But that's why we're here, that and as counsel for the zoning board of appeals, some of the zoning board of appeals members said, why don't you go to the planning board and see if they'll shift the area so you don't need the variance? So we did that. And that's why we're here. Then we went to the ag advisory committee, and I know you have a letter from them, but one of the things that they said was that we, they thought by moving the area of permitted for the agricultural structures to the east, we would reduce the number, the amount of prime agricultural soils available for cultivation, which is of course, you know, something that they should properly be concerned about. But actually, really what happened at the meeting, it was sort of a back-of-the-envelope sort of analysis. Dave Emelida brought, I mean, Dave Emelida, oh my gosh, I'm dating myself, Dave Wilcox. Dave Wilcox. That's going way back. Dave Wilcox brought up a soils map. So what we did was we asked Interscience Research Associates to take a look at that. And they have determined, based upon overlaying the soils map over the proposed and the existing area, that the proposed limits for agricultural structures will actually have less Class 1 prime ag soils, which are BGA, Bridgehampton, silt loam, and haven loam, than the area in which the structures can presently be constructed. The existing area in which the agricultural structures can be constructed contains 17,897 square feet of Class 1 soils, while the proposed contains 16,941 square feet of Class 1 soils. Thus, the location in which we propose to constructures has almost 1,000 square feet less Class 1 prime ag soils than the area which is presently permitted. So that's for your information. I don't have anything else to give to you or explain to you, noting that this is a public hearing. The primary reason for this public hearing is for the public to have their input. But I did tell Mr. Shapiro, who is the principal, that I would read a letter for, to the board. And I'll try to be fast, he's, but he felt very much heartfelt about me wanting to read the letter. So if you'll indulge me, and I appreciate it. My name is Adam Shapiro, and I appreciate your taking the time to listen to the following statement on the matter before you. And some of this is germane to this request, some of it isn't, he's not a lawyer, he's, he's not a land use lawyer, but if you would indulge me a little bit, he wants to tell you his story. I will start with a bit of history. My wife and I purchased the property at 625 Butter Lane in 2015. The property included a failed tree farm that had fallen into neglect. We were excited by the opportunity to restore the property, which included an inventory of approximately 500 specimen trees. In our first year of ownership, approximately 30 mature beech trees died due to lack of proper prior, prior lack of care. The irrigation system in the tree farm was not operational, trees had been, not been spaced properly, and many trees had unaddressed root issues. We hardened and experienced local arborists full-time, full-time, to help turn things around. We restored the irrigation system, moved approximately 100 trees to improve spacing, implemented regular pruning, and addressed organically blights that have attacked our apple, pear, birch, and mostly, most recently, beech trees. The birch trees were unfortunately beyond saving. The restoration proved to be more work than we expected, and approximately five years ago, we proposed a project that included two low-profile agriculture worker housing units that would not be visible to the neighbors. We spoke with several neighbors about it, and based upon their early conversations, it was clear that we were not going to receive our support. The board should be aware of this. This was an application before the board, went before the zoning board of appeals. We've withdrawn that without prejudice at this time. Quite candidly, we're awaiting some litigation in Sagaponic based upon identical language in an ag reserve parcel. There are other ag reserves parcels with the same language where the town has allowed agricultural labor. Sagaponic, in something that happened, in a new twist, as with this, some of the town board members in a new twist, said they didn't think that ag reserve could allow agricultural housing, even though the town had in the past agreed that it's not a residential use, it's an ag use. But we're awaiting the outcome of the litigation to see whether or not we're going to reinduce, reintroduce that thought. But none of that's before the board now, only just shifting the agricultural area, structures for agricultural structures, and continuing on with Mr. Shapiro's letter. Unfortunately, the mere action of proposing these two units of agricultural worker housing seemed to poison the waters for everything that would come after. Two neighbors voiced concerns for their personal safety and objected on the grounds that, quote, "they had daughters." We didn't understand. To us, it was obvious that it would be safer and less intrusive to have workers known and vetted by us living and working on our property rather than having unknown crews for hire with frequent turnover, cross paths neighbors, and enter onto the property on a daily basis. We too have daughters aged 7' 11", and felt safer with workers known to us living inside the gates of our property. The matter in front of the planning board today does not relate to that, as I said. However, the original worker housing discussion set us on a nearly five-year path at this moment. From the beginning, the objecting neighbors asked us to move the area for agricultural structures towards the middle of the property and closer to our home. They live down towards the, they live to the east and north. So, and that's why I gave you those letters. It's sort of a ping pong that's going on here. This is exactly what we are proposing today. We're prepared to make this accommodation in order to finally move forward with important elements of our project, specifically the greenhouse, storage, and animal housing. Unfortunately, a lot of rumors have circulated about what we are doing on the property. It's actually quite simple. We are doing agriculture. We have developed a thriving farm that includes a wide variety of specimen trees, fruit production, hens, and alpacas. We have no roosters, and alpacas cause significantly less disturbance than most dogs. As you have seen on our, by the way, when, when he first talked to me about alpacas, I said, don't they spit? And he said llamas, that's llamas. As you've, as you've seen on the plan, we intend to erect structures that are extremely well-distanced and shielded from the neighbors. The greenhouse structure will allow us to cultivate tree species that would otherwise not winter successfully in our area. And forgive me, these, it's not before you now, but I'm just trying to read his letter so he can get a sense of what I think is a very measured guide. The storage will support overall operations, and the animal housing will provide shelter for the hens and alpacas. We hope you agree the project is very much within the spirits and rules that apply to agriculture within our area. Sincerely, Adam Shapiro and Yana Pasquale de Shapiro. So that's Mr. Shapiro's letter. I've told you what's going on here. What we're trying to do is shift the area where agricultural structures can be moved primarily for the housing, but also in responding to what we thought was the request of the neighbors, to sort of shift the pain for everybody. Quite candidly, if the board doesn't allow the shifting, what we have done is checked off the box for one of the criteria that we have to have for our zoning board of appeals variance, which is to show that we've tried to, I think it's the statutory language, is obviate, obviate the, the difficulty through some other method. We, we think this makes more sense, but we'll leave it in your good hands to make a decision one way or the other.
Thank you, John. Is there someone who'd like to speak to this application?
I have some.
You have some on Zoom? We have some people here. Yep?
Do you have a list?
I don't have a list. Did you give me a list?
I only had, only Jeff signed it before, before everybody else came.
We can't, so I did because there's no pen now, I'm sorry.
That's a good reason.
I'm supposed to sign in blood.
They took the town pen inside.
You took the town?
Someone took the town pen.
Okay.
Good evening, board members. I'm Jeff Bragman, Railroad Avenue, East Hampton, for Philip and Meredith Berkwitz. They are neighbors to the north. I don't have extensive remarks.
Just speak up, Jeff.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, nobody's talking.
Will do. Usually I have no problem being heard. The issue here really is site plan approval, which is something to keep in mind because, you know, John sort of softly said, you know, some structures are not before you, but they really should be. We've submitted several letters to the town board indicating what the procedure is that we suggest has to be followed here, and we've never seen a site plan for the whole property. And all of the structures are required to have site plan approval. It's in the easement, it's in your law for a reserve area that is brought into creation through a subdivision. Never have seen it. It's a requirement. I don't, I would suggest it's not even ready. It can't be decided without it and shouldn't be decided without it. So all structure, all structures should be in front of the board. I was happy to hear, I guess it was Board Member Burke's, answer John Bennett's statement that he was trying to obviate the need for variances by coming here. He wasn't doing that, and he won't do that. He's going to have to go back. He's here because we raised the same objections in front of the zoning board. We recited the town law about what's required in order to move forward, and he still hasn't complied. Doesn't seem to have any intention of complying. And again, I heard today the same equivocation about what the use is. Is it animal husbandry? Are they pets? It seems to depend on what board he is in front of and what point he's trying to make. He's never, it has to be animal husbandry to be valid under the easement, so it would seem that that's what they are. But he's claimed, he claimed when he moved the case into the planning board that they were household pets. I wanted to say that he mentioned the tree farm, his client mentioned that the tree farm was in, you know, disrepair or not well-maintained. Our information and our observation is that the tree farm was operational, fully well-maintained for more than 10 years before this owner took over. He's in many ways demonstrated that he's not legitimately engaged in agriculture. He's let the, the alpacas run wild. They had to be herded by a neighbor. I mentioned that the last time I was in front of the board. The letters that, and he's removed topsoil from the site, he's stored building materials on the site. So in many, many ways, he's behaved in a manner that suggests that he's not serious about agriculture. I read you the last, I don't know if I read this board, I'm getting confused as to which board I've made which statements to, but I read a statement from the Cornell Cooperative Extension commenting on the proposed greenhouse, and I put that in quotes, where they said it's unlike any structure they've ever reviewed before, doesn't seem to bear any relationship. And the letters that he, that counsel was referring to, where the applicants were suggesting moving structures elsewhere, you know, in the direction or near the direction he's talking about, that was when he was proposing housing. It wasn't even the same structures that he's, that he's talking about. And, you know, essentially, he, Mr. Bennett made the same arguments in front of the agricultural committee, and the, I presume the board is seeing the agricultural committee as memo, and they were very unimpressed by any evidence that he was operating in a manner that was consistent with the way they see farmers typically manage their property. And it wasn't merely the location of prime soils that concerned them, it was also putting structure right in the middle of a field. As you know, the real incentive for preservation of farmlands, even if they're kept fallow, is that they remain open and available for agriculture in the event, I hope, an unlikely event, that we ever really need to go back to those fields for food production. They don't want them arranged in a way that would make agriculture difficult, and that was clearly what they thought this proposal did. And I think that it's obvious, just looking at the layout of the property. You know, he mentioned he's had some problems with his fruit trees. We noticed he planted red cedars near fruit trees, which are damaging to fruit trees. Anybody that runs, you know, a fruit tree farm understands that that's something you don't do. So I don't know what the problem is that he's experiencing now. But he hasn't, there isn't evidence of a, a record of a serious effort to farm or maintain this property. And the only thing I want to make absolutely clear to the board, contrary to what Mr. Bennett has suggested and implied, this is not a case where people moved to an easement for farming and then decided they didn't like farming. This easement was an attraction to my client. In fact, she told me on the phone yesterday she wanted to have a farm, but her husband didn't want to get that far into agriculture. But they, they are supporters of agriculture, but the, the behavior of this applicant and the manner in which he's run the property does not suggest a serious interest in agriculture. To some extent, some of the things he's done have been a bit unneighborly, like trying to design a manure storage unit 50 feet away from our, our property line. But really what's at issue here is, this is a site plan review with certain rules the town board requires. He should be required to put in a full site plan so we know the full story, so we're not looking at things in pieces. And we don't think it's ready to be heard, but we object to this effort to move it because there's no real evidence of a need, an agricultural need to do so. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Someone else in the audience wish to speak, please?
Martha, this is a new one?
All right. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Martha Reichert. Timmy Latham Shea, Kelly Dubin, Cordararo, Riverhead, New York, for the applicant's 639 Butter Lane LLC. I represent Dr. Michelle Green, who has lived at 639 Butter Lane for a number of years. And before she purchased the property, she actually rented it, so she fully knew. And to echo the statements of Mr. Bragman's client, the agriculture that took place on this reserve was an attraction and a place of, you know, pastoral peace and quiet that she enjoyed and made her want to buy it. And so, and I, and again, I echo in Mr. Bragman's statement that this was a subdivision where the residences were purposefully designed to, to border the ag reserve, and the applicant before you today purchased that ag reserve, knowing that it was surrounded by developed residences. And, you know, one of the things that Mr. Bennett said several times, I don't know how many, but probably at least five, was what's not before you today? And I think that if you look at the correspondence between the ZBA file and the planning board file, that's something that we keep raising, is what's not before you today? Because I believe that this applicant has intentionally told the various land use boards different stories in an attempt to impermissibly segment planning and environmental review of what it intends to do here. And that's called segmentation under SECRAN. It's impermissible, right? Because what he's done is he's broken down the applicant's very nebulous agricultural plans in these small little bites where you're not looking at it comprehensively. And that goes against exactly what this board is intended to do, what the town code requires, and what the agricultural easement wants, which is a comprehensive look at what this applicant wants to do. Our clients are clearly not against agriculture. What we're against is a process that is being done piecemeal, and a process that is being done in a disingenuous way really did mislead these boards. Because what's, again, not before you is the fact that there is a stay currently in justice court for the impermissible introduction of a commercial use, the storage of landscaping equipment on this ag easement, on this agricultural reserve. Right? And so Mr. Bennett filed an application before the zoning board for animal husbandry variances in an attempt to trigger town law 267A6, right? Which puts Which puts an automatic stay on any proceedings and furtherance. Except, animal husbandry variances cannot cure the violation that's before the Justice Court. The only thing that could would be a site plan application. But again, you're here for the discussion of where to place agricultural structures and this envelope, right? That is the application that's before you, but how can you view it purely as a box on a map, right? It has to be, and the recommendations of the Agricultural Advisory Committee are very clear. We need to know what the plan is, right? A site plan. And the Town Code requires it. The ag easement requires it. The placement of any bona fide agricultural structure should be undertaken and go through the site plan review process. Even this covenant application does not meet the bare minimum requirements set forth in the code for any kind of application for you to review. And I understand that the covenant amendment application is different, and it's not expressly delineated in the code in terms of its procedure and its process. But a reasonable inference for this board is to require an updated survey showing you existing site plan conditions. For instance, all you have here is moving a box, but you're being asked to consider to do things on a parcel where there are existing violations. There are existing structures that have been constructed without permission and review from this board, including a structure that is not a bona fide agricultural structure of any sort. It's a children's playhouse, and you can see it on the GIS aerials. Sir, can you wait until the testimony is over? Is that your client? Martha? Oh, no, that's not my client. But I suppose if he wants to... Here, I'll give him an opportunity to... You have to identify yourself, sir.
David Reinbach, 102 Chase Court, Bridgehampton.
Mr. Reinbach, why don't you step up to the podium and just introduce yourself?
I have a couple of comments. It's 70 seconds. It's not comprehensive at all. I live at 102 Chase Court, Bridgehampton, which is on the eastern boundary of the reserve. I've lived there since it was the McNamara Farm, 35 years. And I've lived through all of the various owners who have owned it. At our last meeting, Mr. Grossman, who's not here tonight, articulated a list of code violations at 625 Butter Lane, including this building, which is clearly not an agricultural structure, and a host of other violations, including housing for Mr. Shapiro's pet llamas and chickens, a road that was built without a permit, extensive screening that was installed without permission, and a much longer list that is on record somewhere, I'm sure. When I visited the code violation office two years ago, I was told, "Oh, yes, we know all about the violations, but we would have to sue the owner to get them removed, and we simply don't have the resources." So, Mr. Shapiro is defying the rules and regulations of the town because, you know, candidly, he has more money than the code enforcement office has. You know, there's an old saying that locks only keep honest people honest. Southampton residents respect the rules. Southampton residents respect the rules. That's why there's this zoning board of appeals. There are rules. People want relief from the rules. They ask you for relief. But what's the point of having any zoning rules if they're completely ignored by a homeowner? So my two questions for the zoning board of appeals are, will you or can you compel Mr. Shapiro to remove all of the current violations? And if tonight's request is granted, and the building he constructs is not, in fact, a greenhouse, but an entertainment center or housing, will you sue to have the violations removed? Thank you very much.
You know that we're not the ZBA. We are the planning board.
Oh, the planning board. I'm sorry. I thought this was a ZBA meeting.
Can we have your name again? I'm sorry.
David R.E.I.N.B.A.C.H.
Thanks.
And this picture is...
That is a structure that is about 200 feet off of the eastern boundary.
Does it appear on that?
No, it's not. I mean, none of it's on the map. So, where are we? Where's north? This is north?
That's north, yes.
That's north, so it's approximately here. It's like, yeah, it's about here. So I took this photo through the fence that surrounds the property.
And this is, you're calling this a playhouse?
I don't know what it is. It's a playhouse. It's a glamorous playhouse.
Oh, dear.
It looks really big.
It's big. It's like, I would guess it at about 1,000 square feet. And I believe it has electricity.
Let Martha continue.
So anyway, thank you for your, let me interrupt.
Thank you.
So as you can see, Mr. Reinbach has given you a little more context to some of the unpermitted structures. And in the case of the one that he gave you photographic evidence of, it does show up on the GIS. It shows up on the oblique aerials. It shows up on the 2022 aerial. And under the terms of the easement, I mean, I think that's very clearly, that's not an agricultural structure. That's not a barn. That's not, you know, so I think that, again, to bring back what, why we're here. We don't oppose agriculture. We oppose a process where this board is being misled, right? Where the zoning board is looking at one thing. You're looking at something, and we think that the Town Code and the easement have the answer, which is a comprehensive site plan review to really determine what's going on here. The agricultural easement grants the town an ongoing right to enter the property to determine and prevent violations. So that should also be looked into. And I feel that those are, our recommendations are very strongly aligned with what was a unanimous recommendation by the Agricultural Advisory Committee, right? Which is to stop, pause, review this property, and see what's currently happening there before you make any decisions regarding its future. And that's good planning, and that's what this board does. And the values of the town of Southampton in accepting that easement, right? This town, over the decades, has very innovatively undertaken farmland preservation measures. It's an important community value, and so it's important for the people who live around this agricultural reserve. It's important for everyone in the town of Southampton that has supported the CPF Fund. And I know that this predates the CPF Fund, but again, it shows a strong community value that we preserve our open space, that we preserve our farmland, and that we do it in a way that allows future generations to continue farming responsibly. And so what we ask of this board is to require a site plan application. It's very simple. It conforms with the procedure set forth in the code. It's not an onerous thing to ask of this applicant. And that it be a coordinated review between the different land use boards, so that the ZBA isn't entertaining an application for variances for animal husbandry, which is a special permit use that requires an application to this board, right? Everything's being segmented. And so we want to see it all be brought into one umbrella application where the planning board can act as lead agency, where the referrals are coordinated, where the review is coordinated, and we can really see what the applicant's true plans are. I mean, the other thing is, again, when it's convenient for Mr. Bennett, he will cite DAGs and market law, except there is no proof of a bona fide agricultural operation happening here, right? No receipts. It's not in an agricultural district. It's undersized for animal husbandry. You know, so it's, again, let's really see what this applicant intends to do. Let's hold them to the terms of the easement, the provisions of the code, and review this in a meaningful and comprehensive way.
Could I ask you a question? Do you know if there's any documentation on this structure? Was there any, ever a building permit issued?
No, there are no building permits issued, and there was no review by this board, which is required for any structure being placed on this property pursuant to the terms of the agricultural easement and also pursuant to Town Code, because this is an ag reserve that was created pursuant to an open space subdivision.
So I'm assuming no COO?
No. There are no COOs for anything on the property.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Martha. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak before we go to Zoom?
Before I leave the podium, there's someone's Kindle here.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Nico Elmali. I live at 9 Cody Way. On the photograph there, if you can see, sort of a beige tennis court. If you go up, yes, exactly. That's my home. And as you can see, it's surrounded by two ag reserves, which is basically why I bought the house in the first place. So that I would have quiet enjoyment of a very peaceful setting forever and ever. I found out about this at one point from Michelle Green, and I sent a letter, which copy I hope you have somewhere. I'm back again in objection to this. I can understand growing things, as there were trees being grown there before. But building structures and operating a farm, especially if the person doing it is not a farmer, doesn't seem like, in fact, a very serious thing. I wonder what his real purpose is in all of this. He's clearly not an agriculturalist himself. The nature of our community, right there, is private homes looking out on a peaceful reserve. And this would be very upsetting, and not to mention the fact that it would damage the value of our home significantly. It would have a substantial impact. And that's something to consider. If you were in my shoes, I'm sure you would feel exactly the same way. So I don't know why he wants to build what he wants to build. I don't know what the purpose is. It's clearly not his main business because he has a home there. So, in any case, I'm against. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Yes, please.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the planning board. My name is Marina DeLuca, and I serve as an environmental associate with Group for the East End. Due to a scheduling conflict, our president, Bob DeLuca, who's been engaged in the review of the Butter Lane application, is unable to attend this evening's meeting. In Bob's absence, he has asked me to provide you with the comments he intended to deliver this evening on behalf of Group for the East End. To date, we have attended and provided testimony at meetings and hearings related to the 625 Butter Lane application before both the zoning board of appeals and the Agricultural Advisory Committee. At each opportunity, we have expressed our concerns that the existing development on the subject site, as well as the proposed future development on this property's agricultural reserve, cannot meet the terms of the easement established for this property as conditions of the World Peace Subdivision back in the mid-1990s. Tonight, it is our sincere hope that the planning board will review this proposal with an awareness of the vulnerability of small agricultural reserves throughout the town and act firmly to uphold the town's longstanding and legal commitments to protecting the town's agricultural heritage and economy. In our experience, smaller agricultural reserves have become increasingly valuable to the interests of private landowners who seek to alter or modify reserve conditions to the point that the reserve parcels' agricultural land use objectives become diminished or functionally eliminated. With respect to the subject application, we believe our most significant concerns are largely embodied in the recent findings of the Agricultural Advisory Committee, which responded to a referral from the planning board with respect to a proposed building envelope modification. The advisory committee makes clear, through their unanimous recommendations, the subject application raises substantive concerns regarding the actual agricultural purpose of the proposal's building envelope modification, the potential impact on agricultural soils associated with a relocated building envelope, the development and utilization of the agricultural reserves in a way that undermines the goals of farmland protection in the town of Southampton, and the need for a full inspection, sorry, the need for a full inspection of the subject site to determine its current compliance with the terms of New York State Agriculture and Markets Law, as well as the terms of the agricultural reserve. And lastly, a project assessment that determines the actual agricultural use of the property and uses that determination as the basis for any subsequent assessment of site-specific needs. In an effort to address these important recommendations and provide the planning board with the information it needs to make its most well-reasoned and rational decision, we also strongly recommend that the board require a detailed site plan application for the entire reserve area, including specific details for all existing and proposed structures to a level of detail that is sufficient for informed decision-making. All such information should also be provided to the Agricultural Advisory Committee for further review, as outlined in their February findings. As the planning board is well aware, the town and its citizens have worked for a better part of four decades to assure the continued existence of viable agricultural, of a viable agricultural economy. But changes to that longstanding doctrine are ever-present. As a result, each of the town's land use boards must look at every project with a shared diligence and conviction to protecting Southampton's agricultural heritage and demand the most stringent level of review when actions are presented. This is the view clearly provided by the Agricultural Advisory Committee, and we strongly agree with their recommendations and comments. Thank you for your time and attention to our concerns.
Thank you, Marina. Can you submit those comments to us?
Do you want this as a copy, or would you like it emailed at a later date?
Yeah, I'm going to take all the hard copies.
Take a hard copy?
Yeah.
And give it to Anthony.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak before we go to Zoom? We have people waiting on Zoom, so I'd like to get those into the record.
People have been dancing around the subject a little bit.
Mr. Reinbach, you can't, the camera can't pick you up and the mic can't pick you up.
Sorry, inconvenience, Mr. Bennett. Everyone's talking about farming and farming and farming. At the risk of stating the obvious, and I know I'm stating the obvious, Mr. Shapiro is not a farmer. You know, he is an extremely wealthy money manager. He owns a company called East Rock. His biggest client is a real estate developer who builds housing developments. And, you know, it appears to me, and I guess to most people, that this is just a real estate development. You know, it's a way to turn a highly encumbered piece of property, which is an ag reserve with a lot of covenants on it, into a part of a big, you know, 25, I'm sorry, you know, a 10-acre private estate with accessory structures, et cetera. And, you know, I think, you know, I hope I'm not stating the obvious, but that seems to be what the larger agenda is here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Charles, can we go to people on Zoom?
Pamela Sorensen.
Go ahead, Pam. You can introduce yourself.
Pamela, you're on.
Oh, yes. Hi, Pamela Barwood. The president of the Southampton Civic Association. Thank you for letting me speak today. We believe that one of the most important responsibilities of our elected and appointed county officials, including members of the planning board, is to uphold the covenant that describes and limits the activities and development that can take place on our agricultural property. There are those that have said that they are continually surprised when people buy homes abutting in agricultural reserve, and then after they move in, are opposed to agricultural activities that take place on the reserve. However, in this case, it seems that the neighbors are not opposed to agricultural activity that is allowed by the reserve easement. Rather, it appears that it is the applicant who purchased the agricultural reserve, fully aware of its restrictions, who has, over the course of several years, been trying to change or enhance the allowed activities and the nature of development that can take place on this property. In today's request, it is to ask for a change in the location of the building envelope for agricultural structures. The town's attorneys, over the course of many years, have worked hard to refine the language of these covenants so that the owners would have very particular rights and the public can have very particular expectations. We have to assume that in placing the building envelope where it is currently allowed, the town's tenants and their attorneys had good reasons. If the language of this easement is changed, won't that set a precedent for all the other easements governing our town's agricultural reserves? We also believe that the town's 1999 comprehensive plan and the 2004 Bridgehampton-Hamlet plan call for the preservation of our agricultural properties and reserves as far as it is within the town's right to do so. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Charles, may we have the next speaker? Okay, please go ahead. State your name. You're on Zoom.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Give us your name.
Okay, thank you very much, Planning Board. Because I don't have video to see if everyone was there, I don't know if Jackie LaFaro's there, but she was in the original planning board meeting, which I've sent the minutes to, and Mrs. LaFaro's response, when she first heard of this project over four years ago, in a work session, was, she was aghast at the project, and she said, "Oh my," something like, "I can't believe that this huge structure would be right next to the neighbors, we'll have to do something about it." I sent the exact minutes of that discussion.
Ma'am, ma'am.
I think, I think what's very important in this, and it's something that Mr. Bennett mentioned.
Can we have your name?
Ma'am, can you please give your name?
Yeah, we need your name for the...
Oh, it's Dr. Michelle Green.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Something very important that Mr. Bennett mentioned three or four times, and then he would say afterward, but we're not here for that today, is that they're watching the case in Psychoponic with housing. This is all about a case that involves housing. It was a case four years ago, it's a case now with housing. Nora Caitlin, who is the expert from the agriculture community in greenhouses, reviewed the application that they submitted, a growth application at best, and she said, "Clearly, this is not a production greenhouse." When the agricultural review board listened to Mr. Bennett wax on about the agriculture that's done on the property, there was no truth in it, because nothing has been sold. According to the agricultural review board, nothing's been sold, there's been no deductions on the taxes, he's not a farmer. When I moved to that property 10 years ago, it was a beautiful tree farm. It was breathtaking, and that's why, as Martha said, I rented the property and then I bought it. As soon as Mr. Shapiro bought the property, he called me to say he had big plans. I didn't know better, I gave him the, I was very trusting, I gave him the coat to my gate. He came in, he actually knocked down all the trees, the olive trees, that separated my property from the back fence of his land where the reserve is, because he, then, a week or two later, was gonna start to build. He put hay down, ready to build, no building, no building, no planning, no, no approvals by, by planning board, by anyone. And like a thief in the night, during COVID, when everyone was worried about dying, when everyone was overwhelmed, all town officials, everything was closed, he came, and he built the, the packing, the, the chicken farm, the chicken housing, alpaca housing, and then later this, this playhouse for an extremely rich kid, I guess, but he did all this and built roads and dumped, and continued to destroy the property. I sent videos to the code violation of him taking a whole host of wheeling topsoil, valuable topsoil, out of the reserve. Code violation was there several times. They stopped his building, he had a pinnacle electrical there to build during, paused during COVID. This is the character of the person you're dealing with. This is someone who's duplicitous. They lied at the, at the original planning board from four years ago. If you watch the video, they said they had no plans. About a week or two later, the attorneys submitted like a packet of plans with an enormous greenhouse, larger than, you know, like the, the apple cube in Manhattan, and, and they had all these plans, and the current plan that they say is a greenhouse is a huge housing structure, so then his property will now be worth 12 million, it'll be worth 25 million. And furthermore, Al Tufts, which he waxes on about how Al Tufts did this, did this World Peace easement, that's true, he did, but he also gave two affidavits, one saying that he put this, the building envelope as an afterthought next to my property because he thought the Comper Mollys, who owned my home before I did, were going to buy the reserve, and secondly, he said it was only meant for a shed, it was never meant for agricultural, you know, housing for workers, it was never meant for any of these other things that John Bennett would let, would, would lead you to believe, and there are two affidavits, this year and two years ago, that Al Tufts was willing to sign, and he said he'd come and speak to the planning board. I mean, everyone has tried to explain what's going on. I have, the most important thing to take, to take away with this, is that he's trying to build housing, he wrote a letter to my broker saying he's building housing, this is not a greenhouse, and there are builders and contractors who I know, and lawyers, who are waiting to see the decision by the planning board to this agricultural reserve, because this is gonna be a watershed moment, because if you allow him to build housing in this reserve, which as I'm told cannot be later taken down, if he's allowed to build this housing under the guise of a greenhouse, this is gonna be a watershed moment, and Bennett will have tons of business, and so will the other contractors in the area, to build housing. Everyone's watching this case, just the way he says he's watching the, the, in Psychoponic, what's going on with that, with that situation with housing there. So I think you have to take a deep look, and I'm gonna end with the fact that if you look at what Mary Lee Foster said, and she's a very, very smart woman, and she's a real farmer, she says, "In conclusion, regardless of what evidence the planning board weighs in their review of the application, the ag advisor committee unanimously recommends that the property be inspected before any changes are permitted and found to be in compliance with the terms of the original easement and the New York Agricultural and Markets Law 301." I mean, it's in violation of countless violations, dumping manure, I had a porta potty sitting for two years that they finally removed, but Bennett said they were too busy to remove, it had flies and vermin there. Someone should come take a look at the property. I had pictures of what it looked like when I moved there years ago, I have pictures of what it looks like now, you can go see it yourself. He's destroyed the agricultural reserve. There, there's no farming going on there, there are just trees that make a beautiful view for his home, specimen trees. There is no farming, there are no fruit trees being sold, and alpacas, from the four alpacas he has, that he has as pets, you can make, if you read, $80 worth of alpaca fur, it's actually just a tax dodge, and that's why he has alpacas, not because he, he's gonna make any money from them, it's for a tax write-off. This is a businessman, this is a developer, this is not a farmer. And I really thank you for seriously taking a look at everything that I've sent you, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles, the next speaker? Yes, please give us your name for the record. Whoop, you're, you're on mute. So just on...
Is that me?
There you go.
Got it.
Okay, hi, I am Meredith Berkowitz, and I resided when Cody Way, Jeff Bravman represents my husband, I, Jeff has already addressed most of the legal, some of the legal issues, as have Martha and others that spoke. All I really want to add is that others have said, is this is not a case of neighbors who buy next to agriculture and then don't respect agriculture, as Mr. Bennett has alluded now several times with several different boards. It's actually the applicant that is not respecting the easement, the agricultural easement that preserves the property for the benefit of all who bought around that subdivision to enjoy and to preserve the open space. More than does he even take care of that property or the animals as a responsible farmer would. Besides that Thanksgiving escape, back a few months ago, I was home, and I heard children screaming. I ran to my porch to see, I thought somebody had gotten hurt. What I saw was Mr. Shapiro's children driving around in a farm vehicle, chasing the alpaca around the reserve, with the young girls screaming to the boy that seemed to be driving who looked like a teenager, screaming, "No, no, you'll hurt them, don't stop." And then the car sped up and chased the alpacas off again into the trees. I have video of this, and I do plan to share a link with the planning board following this meeting. It is a very disturbing video to see, that someone who says they're a farmer and reserves agriculture, would chase off these poor innocent sweet animals in the way that they were tormented in this, by his children. Sorry, I, it chokes me up a little bit when I, when I talk about that. As Mr. Bravman had said, I, I do respect farming, and I, in fact, wanted to farm myself, so I do find it upsetting when I see animals treated in that fashion. As Jeff also mentioned, they were loose at Thanksgiving, they somehow got out of the reserve, they were loose on Butter Lane. It was only thanks to the neighbor, Kevin Cox, who was able to get them off of Butter, where they could have been hurt or injured, they could have caused property damage, they could have, you know, hurt somebody else, or, or done who knows what. He was able to bring them back into the private driveway that he shares with Mr. Shapiro, but they had to wait for somebody to open the gate, HVAC vehicle came, there were no ranchers, no farmers, nobody looking over the property, and when that HVAC vehicle went in to service the house, Mr. Cox was able to then herd the alpaca back into the property. Those alpaca were remains outside on the property all Thanksgiving weekends, they were not brought back to their shelters, I presume because nobody was there, I don't really know. I don't know if they had shelter protection, I don't, in the cold winter, I don't know if they had food or water, they were grazing openly. And, you know, this was just very upsetting to me, as someone who respects agriculture and cares. All we're asking for here is that he farm responsibly, and that he follow the rules and the requirements of the easement that he agreed to willingly and voluntarily, and that just like all of us, he'd abide by those terms and by the town code. The last thing I just want to mention is, because the question's been asked, he just took, like Michelle's property, he also recently, in the last few weeks, took down all these beautiful olive trees that bordered my property and his, they were on his side of the property, but they've existed for decades, they were two prior owners before Mr. Shapiro. And he took all of those trees, he didn't leave a single one, he took them down to their stumps, and he removed that vegetation, that screening vegetation willingly, and in my view, purposefully. And so I just wanted to let you know that is that. Thank you very much for your time.
I was there during that.
No, no, you can't, we're moving forward, thank you very much. Yes, please give us your name? You're, you're on mute? Can you unmute yourself?
Can't do you.
Can you hear me?
Now we can. Your name, please?
So, my name is Garrett Ursh, I've been a broker in the Hamptons with Alan Schneider, now the Corking Group, for over 27 years, and I represent properties on Cody, I've represented properties on Cody Way, including the house that Nico bought, and also Michelle Green's property, I've represented that in the past, is currently off the market. You know, one of the reasons people buy on the reserve is, is because they know what's gonna happen, or they, if it's not there now, they know eventually what's gonna happen, because when they bought the property, their attorneys explain to them what could happen on the reserve, their covenant restrictions and easements, and they pretty much know, and that's for their enjoyment. And unless you're buying a house on the ocean, or a bayfront, maybe an estate, buying on a reserve is one of the more attractive properties you can buy, because you have all this open space behind you, you have views, and you know, okay, so maybe eventually where they're allowed to do it, they'll have agricultural structures, but not necessarily housing. I got a letter from John Bennett, oh, by the way, John, if you're listening, both llamas and alpacas spit, and it's not like you and I spit, it comes from the depths of their stomach. It's wet, it's smelly, it's pretty wasteful, and so, and they can spit pretty far. But anyway, the, the advantage of having a house on a reserve is for, for the views, for the peace and quiet, to, to watch whatever agriculturally is going on, on that reserve in the location that it's supposed to be, and what's allowed there. You know, I got a letter from John back in October of '21, when I was representing Dr. Green's house, correcting me that, so, just telling me that he's applying for housing there, for farmhand housing, and everyone who buys a house there should be aware of that, in case I wasn't aware. Okay, but that's really not what that property was for, and it certainly speaks to the value of it, and behind Dr. Green's house, were they to build, what they want to build there, and as close to her property line, it gets the value of her property by well over, well over a million dollars, well over, besides the peace and enjoyment that she would no longer have. If a variance is granted on the basis of what it does to the surrounding properties, then there is a big detriment there. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles, is there anyone else on the Zoom?
That's it.
That's it.
That's it. Anyone further from the audience who'd like to speak? So, this is 10 days, huh? If we want to close it? Yeah, maybe. Yeah. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close with a 30-day written comment period. Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, abstentions, five in favor, two absent. So you can write letters, please send us your letters, or anybody else who couldn't come, they're welcome to do that as well. Addresses to the planning board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by George, second by Dennis, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, five in favor, two absent.
I think, did you make this for...
Marina?